2018 at 5:30. We have a quorum. I'll call this meeting to order. First order of business is the invocation. I do not see a minister, so if you will join me in a moment of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no beginning, justice, or all.
Okay. Next order of business is special recognitions and presentations.
Yes, sir, Mayor, from our community development department, we'll have Ms. Bisaka come up to recognize Ms. Mandy Lamoth and Mariana Hestrova.
Fair well, Ms. Bisaka is coming up.
Yes, sir.
Item B will be postponed until the 24th of April.
Okay.
The representative had an emergency and will not be able to make it to this meeting.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I did a great job of copying it and then an even better job of leaving it at my desk. I'm very pleased. I'm very pleased to be able to tell you about our employees of the month. The person who nominated them is from the clerk's office, and they wanted to nominate Mandy Lamoth and Mariana Hestrova for their assistance with the 2018 Youth Leadership Seminar. As you know, the Student Advisory Council holds a youth leadership seminar each year, and this year, Mandy and Mariana spent a great deal of time and lent their expertise to help them do site plan requirements so that this group had the opportunity to act as planners. We hope that that encouraged them to find other types of business when they got older, but perhaps not. Ms. Lamoth made herself available to the Student Advisory Council on several occasions and spent a great deal of time preparing and then helping these young people so that they could have the experience of putting together a civic center, I believe. They had to look at setbacks in landscaping, and so they had the opportunity to do what you're sometimes called upon to do is to put things in a certain place. And Ms. Hestrova, who is our GIS analyst, made maps so that each of these projects could have a special map. And without the help of these two city staff members and their expertise, the Student Advisory Council would have had a much more difficult planning the program and the 2018 leadership seminar. So I'd like to thank them. And just to say that this is just a part of what they do. They are outstanding employees for our department and the city.
Mayor, could I have you join us and get a picture after your comments?
Yes, I'd just like to say one thing to both ladies. I did attend that event, and I went around and talked to the young people there, young adults, and they were really having a good time. I saw the maps that were there, and they were also into it. It was amazing. They all did. Every one of them stopped and talked, though, which was interesting. You don't usually get groups that large where everyone will talk, and they did. So they were having a good time, and thank you very much for what you did. And I'll see you down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business is the 2017 Trails Promoter of the Year Award.
Yes, sir, we have Becky Alfonso, who is the Executive Director of Florida Bicycle Association, and she has a presentation for council.
Good evening, Mayor. The Florida Bicycle Association is a membership-based 501(c)(3) nonprofit whose mission is bicycling education and promotion of safe cycling. We call it FBA. FBA is not a bicycle club. We are and always will be people, businesses, organizations, and communities working together to build a bicycle-friendly Florida to benefit all. We're blazing trails. Hashtag LaunchFromHere. As I understand it, the LaunchFromHere is a local campaign created by the people who love to live here for the people who will love to visit here. The here being the city of Titusville, gateway to nature and science. This gateway to nature is becoming a cycling hub. Brevard's newly-installed section of the Florida East Central Regional Rail Trail, which stretches from Cannavale Avenue to the Volusia County Line, is a paved 12-foot-wide multi-use trail that will connect with 52 miles of rail trail in Volusia County. This regional trail is also part of three larger systems: the Coast-to-Cost Trail, which stretches from St. Petersburg to Titusville; the St. John's River to Sea Loop, which will connect five counties; and the East Coast Greenway that runs from east coast of the United States, Maine, all the way to Key West. Titusville's trails have the potential to draw cyclists, pedestrians, equestrians, and other trail blazers who will boost the economy via the use of local businesses, restaurants, and lodging. The city continues to invest in developing trails, trail amenities, trails' marketing, and it has opened a new welcome center with bicycle concierge through the Coast-to-Cost Bike Shop. Thank you. Thank you, City of Titusville, and tonight we'd like to honor you with a presentation for being our 2017 Trails Promoter, specifically to Eddie McCall, Economic Development Director. Can we have that award here?
Mayor, could you accept it on behalf of Eddie McCall?
She certainly did, and we appreciate all of her efforts. I also want to let it be known that the inspiration for all of this is sitting right there, the city manager. He's done a great job in putting this all together as well. If you want to take that to her, that would be great, or if you want me to take it.
We'll make sure she gets it, sir.
And I'm coming from Pinellas County, which has Dunedin as the first rail town. You're well on your way. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming over. Okay. Next item is other post-employment benefits actuarial evaluation with GASB 75 disclosures fiscal year 2017.
Yes, sir, the city's actuary from Foster &amp; Foster will review the actuary evaluation report with the GASB 7475 disclosures for FY ending 30 September 2017. Council recommended action is acknowledge the presentation and receive the OPEB actuarial evaluation. And we do have one card on this item after the presentation. Sir?
Good evening. Well, I'm back again. I'm going to go over a couple of slides and then a very big overview of our valuation. I'm not going to go through all the crunching of the numbers, but through the highlights. The first thing I want to start with is where we left off last fall, when we were asked to estimate the impact of adopting the new accounting standard, GASB 75, which replaced GASB 45. It's just a new way of measuring the post-retirement liabilities for health care, as well as building in all the new assumptions that we'd have to use for 75, and to reflect the changes that the city council made in May of 2017 to remove the cap for tiers one and two. We put all that together back in the fall, and we based it upon our last valuation, which was in 2015, rolling it forward because we didn't have new data or claims cost or any information on the premiums that were going to come out later in the year. So what we did, a little bit conservatively, but we're rolling forward the information from 10/115 all the way to 9/30/2017, and said that this is an estimate of your GASB 75 liability as of 9/30/17, which is when you would have to adopt it. Now, a couple of things happened after that. That was the starting point. 9/30/17 was the starting point for the year 9/30/17 to 9/30/18, which is the year you would have to adopt it. However, the decision was made to early adopt it, which GASB recommends early adoption, but they don't require it. So Titusville decided to adopt it early for the fiscal year ending 9/30/17, a year earlier than it had to. So for the fiscal year that just ended, which will be in your CAFR, you represented that you have adopted GASB 75. You recognize a large liability, but still that 9/30/17 measurement is still the endpoint. It's the endpoint rather than the beginning point. So what that did was change our arithmetic. So what I want to do is walk through how we got from here to there, and we said, well, at that point, we estimated that the liability would be about $74.5 million, based upon the same assumptions we've been using and a 4% discount rate, which was a guess at 20-year bond rate at that point. All the other assumptions, you know, not much changed. We didn't have new claims information to make any adjustments. So that was the number that you had back then. Now, let's turn to Exhibit 2. And this is where we received the updated employee census data as of 10/116. We received new information, and the key part was probably the healthcare information from your healthcare consultant, showing what the experience has been for the last year, as well as the last couple of years, as to where your claims have been coming in and what you've been charging people versus what we've been assuming. And this is always, I would call it, a self-correcting process. You do valuations every two years, which is all that's required. So we make assumptions as to what the claims will be, what the premiums will be, and then every two years we have to true it up. The pre-65, your experience was perhaps a little bit worse than we thought or projected. I think that was backed up by what your healthcare consultant was saying, that you were increasing your claims higher than the assumption was, almost double-digit. But you also pointed out that the post-A65 medical coverage is insured. The pre-65 is self-insured. The post-65 is insured product, and that has not been going up at the same double-digit rates or the high single-digit rates that we were going to be assuming. So subsequent to that presentation, we had discussions with finance group here and our health actuaries who prepare these valuations, and we said, we need to look at this differently now for a couple of reasons. One is, this liability is going to be on the balance sheet. We don't want to underestimate or underestimate it. Two is, we have different experience for post-65 insured plan versus your pre-65 self-insured. Your pre-65 self-insured is harder to control, and there's been claims, and I think it's still, you can talk to Joe, but I think it still runs pretty high. And we were assuming that it's going to start at 8.75% inflation, healthcare inflation, and gradually get down to about 4.5% to 5% over time. But that's a pretty high rate. The second thing is, you raised the cap on the tiers one and two, so there is no cap on post-65 coverage. So it's very important that before the cap, once you hit the $500, in essence, for valuation purposes, it really doesn't make a difference what you assume, because whatever is going to be higher above 500, the retired pays it. Your liability was kept at 500. Now, if you remove the cap, the healthcare trend rate is very important. And so we wanted to take a look at that to reflect that there is no cap on those people. Two-thirds of the liability is for post-65 benefits. So two-thirds of what we're talking about is post-65. What we did, we analyzed it and came up with two different healthcare trend rates. One for pre-65, your self-insured program, and two for the post-65 insured program. And we made them different. We made the post-65 a flat 4%. We made other assumptions, too. We had to change the claims cost. We took losses on that, and we had to change the mortality table to match what you had in the pension plan. We had to update it. As you know, from past discussions with the actuary on pensions, you had to adopt generational improvement tables per the state requirements. So we feel we should use the same mortality tables there. So why don't we go on Exhibit 2 and just walk it through? Because what I wanted to do is say, this is where we were estimating. This is where we end up. How do we get there? So let's look at the changes. The one was, change in census data, we updated for a year. That's pretty minor. It's only $68,000 difference from what we're estimating. Updated claims costs and premiums. That caused a $2.64 million loss. That resulted in liability is greater than we were assuming because of the new information. Here's a big one, the updated trend rate assumptions. While we increased the pre-65 assumptions, we lowered the post-65 to be flat for 4%. The healthcare actuary said somewhere between 3% to 4%, we decided to go at the 4% rate. And that's becoming more common now to have a different post-A65, because most of these post-65 are insured supplemental plans, Medicare Advantage-type arrangements. That reduced the liability by $18 million. The next one was, well, we were using 4%. We mentioned when we estimated that. But we're mandated to use the 20-year municipal bond rate at that point in time, 9/30/2016. That rate was 3.06%. That raised the liability by $8.51 million. I'll mention, that will change every measurement period. We have to take a snapshot, what that rate is, and you can see on the next page, we have to change it again at year-end. So all those changes total $6.94 million from our previous estimate. So now, let's go to Page 3, Exhibit 3. We started with the 74.46. From the previous page, we adjusted that by 6.94, so we were expecting 6.6752. That's where we began with, 9/30/16, as your GASB 75. What that means is, and your auditors will get more into this, as to, at that point in time, you take a snapshot, and whatever you have accrued already goes up to the 6752. So let's say you had $10 million on your books for accrued liability for GASB 45. Well, now, we have 67, but we have a couple million dollars of assets. So the unfunded was like 65 million. So we had to go from 10 million on your books to 65 million on your books. You have a prior period adjustment, let's say $55 million at that point in time. Bam. That's what happens when the cities and counties and states have to adopt GASB 75. Whatever they had on their books, fairly small, they have to adopt and book the whole liability at that point in time. And most of these plans are unfunded. You have about $2.5 million, which went against that. Most of them are unfunded. The state of Florida had a big number. They have no assets. They're in the billions of dollars. That will go on their books. When you see their CAFR this year, you're going to see a multi-billion-dollar liability. Now, that's at 9/30/16. We go to the end of the year, 9/30/17. What happens? Well, as I mentioned, we have to use the discount rate at 9/30/17 to say, what's the liability at that point? The good news is, went from 3.06 to 3.64. The higher the interest rate means the lower the liability. It's like a bond. It moves in the same direction. So we reduced the liability by 5.42. And we had to roll it forward, so there's like $0.7 million just for more service being accrued during that period of time, and we ended up with a liability, you can see, of $62.8 million, which is the result that's in our actual evaluation report. Now, you have a couple million dollars of assets, so you're roughly about $60 million of unfunded OPEB liability, which is the numbers I think your auditor will show you in the CAFR. Next year, what happens? Well, we're not going to do another valuation for another year, but when we measure it, again, 9/30/18, we have to reflect another discount rate change, whatever experience there is. So the discount rate is going to go up and down. We presented a chart, which I can share with you, but it shows over the last five years, with all its healthy and a 20-year bond rate, over the five years, it went from like 4.6% down to 3.4%. It's reflective of interest rates. You would think they would be going up, but if you looked at 12/31/2017, it actually went down from the 3.64. We have no control on that. You have no control. As long as you are not funding these liabilities, like your pension. Quick note, the pension rules under GASB 68 has the same requirement, that you have to use a 20-year bond rate, unless you have enough money in your plan that you'll never run out of money. And guess what? The pension plans will never run out of money by definition. They're not 100% funded, but you're required to fund them every year. So why don't we use 3.06 in the pension? We don't have to. We can justify 8% because they're funded, and we have to go through analysis to prove that they will never go unfunded. Retirement medical is a different question. What if you had funded this plan? What could you use? A big, lot-higher rate. And in the valuation report, they tell you what that liability is, if you get to use one percentage point more or one percentage point less. One percentage point, I believe, I recall, is about $8 million. So that's the direction you may, you know, the next step is, what happens if we start to fund it? The more you fund it, we get to use a higher rate than this 20-year bond. And so like, wow, if we 100% funded, guess what? We could probably use seven or eight, and that $62 million will go down to about $40 million. So it's just the requirement, how they want us to present value of those future cash flows. GASB set the new rule out. They did not have that in GASB 45. It's a new requirement, and everybody stuck with it. So that's the reconciliation. Is there any questions on those exhibits? We tried to make them so it's just kind of walks through in sort of like the same way we look at them internally, like, how do we get from here to here? Pushed back, like, go.
If I may ask, so according to this, our present liability for the future is $62.8 million?
Before subtracting assets, yes. And the assets were $2.5 million.
We have $2.5 million in the OPEB trust fund.
So the net is 60.3, yes.
Any other questions? Yes.
Do you have a recommendation on how much we should be putting as I each year?
As an actuary, what we work with is, and the ones that have a trust, and you have a trust.
Correct.
What we do is provide a separate valuation, not GASB.
Okay.
Separate valuations, like a pension valuation, say, well, we're not stuck with this 20-year bond rate. What do you think you can make on your investments? 7%, 6.75, 6.5 long-term? We'll do a valuation at that rate, come up with the liabilities, come up with a normal cost, just like pension, and say, if you want to fund this, you get funded over 25 or 30 years, here is the level amount actuarially that you should put in. It may be 3 million. It could be 3.5 million. If we did that, over time, you would reach the funding amount. The key is, we don't use 3.6% for that calculation.
Right.
It's really, there's a separate calculation, say, what are the assets going to earn? Because you've got two things going for you, if you think of it. If you start funding these, you not only will reduce this accounting liability, and this, I call it an accounting liability, it doesn't change your cash flow for these benefits, right? It just represents how much you have to put in your books for them. What if you start funding them, you got the 25%, 50%? Even if you got only 50% funded, you're making way, you still get to use whatever rate we could justify. If you're using 7% funding, and GASB says 3.64, they say, all the benefits that can be funded by your assets, you get to use 7, and the unfunded, you have to use 3.64. So somewhere in the middle is where it comes out to one rate, maybe 5%, 5.5%, okay? That would make a big progress. It reduces it, and if you think of long-term, the investment return on the assets is the whole purpose of funding them. The investment return makes a whole lot more than 3%, hopefully, and that will fund the liability. So it does two things. It's similar in the pension. You have a great return last year. You're up to 97% funded. What if you weren't funding those benefits? It's pay-as-you-go, right? You would have a big, your payment for the benefits would be much larger than your contribution. That's a whole theory. The opposite side of that is, well, these benefits can be changed. They're not permanent. We can change them. We just improve them, but we can reduce them down. Whatever money you put in that retirement health trust stays there. It never can come back to the city.
Right.
It's a one-way street, but if you're committed to those benefits and those liabilities, it's something like, should we prudently fund those in advance, so at least we can know that, you know, start to have the investment return as well as the side benefit is. I can cut down this number that Foster &amp; Foster has to report to the auditors every year. We don't like reporting these big numbers, but...
We don't like you for that. We don't like you.
I know. It's sort of like, the state has mandated mortality. The GASB mandated the interest rates, and all you do is, you know, give us your claims cost and everything. You don't have a lot of control on that either. It's a mathematical analysis we do, but from this point on, we'll be looking at those trend rates. I'm hoping the 4% stays, because there's more cost control on the post-A insured plan, but that's a big thing. I don't want to come back two years and say, I use 4.5% or whatever. It could be. Depends by inflation. Every year you do that. Now, what's your expense for this plan? The expense for the plan is changed as well under the GASB 75. Your expense is $1.375 million. But think of it. Last year, and off the top of my head, I believe the cash that you paid for all the benefits, the explicit benefits, the $500 caps and everything, all the caps, was $1.8 million, or $1.8 million, $1.8 million in cash. We're saying that your expense is $1.375. Somebody says, well, we're paying 1.8, and we're paying another half million dollars a year for the implicit, for retirees that get a good deal, that we have to provide their insurance, and we only can charge them what the active pay. So your expenses is lower than currently than your cash flow out the door. Why is that?
So, well...
It's accounting because, two things. One is, for the next five years, including this year, your expenses reduce $1 million a year because of the interest rate change. The $5.42 million I just pointed out on Exhibit 3, the way expense works is, you take 5.42, you spread it over the average working lifetime everybody, it's like five years, you get like a million-dollar credit in your expense. And after year five, it pops back up to where it was, to $2.5 million. And the other aspect is, there's no amortization of unfunded, right? You booked the whole liability. You're not amortizing anything anymore. The only thing you're going to amortize is gains and losses, change of assumptions, things like that. So that's the key, is what you find is, your expense will go down, but your balance sheet liability goes way up. But once you do that, if I recorded everything, there's no unfunded to amortize anymore. If you look closely, that's kind of what happens. If you look closely, that's kind of what happened in pension plans too, when we adopted Gatsby 68. Expenses actually went down below cash sometimes. It's just the way that works out. You got that liability, and it will gradually be adjusted over time, but it could be, you know, if you fund it, it's just a mechanism. But the key to funding is, it will gradually increase that discount rate that we can use, and we don't have to stick to the 20-year bond rate.
And so basically, every time we put some of the funds into that trust fund, then we're basically reducing our liability.
You're reducing it, but yes. Well, yeah, it will reduce the net liability, because it's liability minus assets. But this also helps us on this test that we have to do, to see what rate we can use overall.
Okay.
And it's a very tricky calculation that we have to sit down with the retiree trust board and the auditors to say, what is the strategy for funding? Because they're not going to say, well, we're going to fund the whole thing the first year. And you can assume that forever? Since you've never done that before, I would not believe the auditors will accept that we could assume that it's always going to be made forever. You have to create a pattern. And Gatsby says, typically, you can look at the average of the last five years, what they've been funding. If we say the requirement's three and a half million, have they been funding that over the last five years? Have they been funding what the actuary says they should be funding? If the answer is yes, then they'll allow us to assume that forever. That's the point where you get to, that you have a pattern and a history of funding what the requirement is. Because then you get to assume it going forward. You can't just do it one year, and the auditors say, oh, you can just assume forever, and now we can use 7%. That would be too good. Because, and that's what it comes into, is making a real legitimate basis to fund it, and you're going to stick to it, and you have a pattern to get to the end. And as you get there, these liabilities magically will drop, but they don't go away. That's the part like, 67 million, 62 million, I come back in two years, you're funding it. Now it's down to 50 million, like, what happened? It's just the rates that you have to use.
Sorry to say...
It could be good, because the interest rates could go up higher. You know, magically, by September 30, what if they were 4.5%? We'd be 97 million dollars off your liability, like that. And nobody says, what happened? How can you do that? So you have to take these liabilities as the basis that you were computed on, and when something changed, they will change fairly dramatically.
Just saying.
So, any other questions? I think that was...
But each year, we have to come up with X amount of cash to perform what you just... Can you give us a ballpark? I know you can't give us an exact amount, but...
My guess right now would be between 3 to 4 million.
Every year?
But you're already paying half of that now.
The money has to come from somewhere, though, sir.
You're already paying half of that now. Right?
So you're saying...
You're pay-as-you-go now. You're paying a million eight to two and a half million dollars for the current benefits. You're running them through the trust and out the trust. I'm saying it's three and a half, four total.
To take advantage of that, how much cash will we have to put in each year, including the money that we're already paying that you just talked about?
Well, roughly, my guess is like an extra million, million and a half, on top of what you're doing now. Because if you look at your trust fund, you're putting million eight, and then you're paying the implicit, and it goes out the door. So you just put more in, you would pay the benefits from the trust, but you gradually accumulate to it. So your answer is, what's the incremental cash beyond what you're doing now? And that's, we can come up with a better number, but that would be in a magnitude, probably a million and a half dollars to two million at most. Key is, what do you want to assume for your investment return? You don't have a lot of cash to invest now, so you can't say, oh, I want to use 8%. Because you only have two and a half million dollars in there, I don't know what you, you know. But that's the key, is, you want to know, what's the incremental cash on top of what we're already paying? Because you're paying a big number now. And I'm saying, you have to get up to here, but here to here is not 4 million, maybe a million and a half to 2 million. And that's what, that's what you want to look at.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And so I have probably about four questions, and I'm coming from a layman's perspective, yeah, so simple is better, right? And I'm asking these in, in an attempt to better understand numbers, timing, and appropriate policy to, so measuring out when I see a number, at what pace is a reaction appropriate, right? So as an example, six months ago, it was 75, roughly 75 million. From a policy perspective, barring anything that was done up here, which I don't think that there were, there were some changes, but I can't think of something that is, I can attribute and say, that's what dropped us to 60 million, which is the number that I have now. So what I do hear is, from the accounting process, the measurements that are made, or so forth and so on, it just took, it was best guess, not best guess, best, best calculation that could be come up with to give us the 75 million.
Well, was he...
Possibility.
Those were the current assumptions, yes.
Right. So six months ago, it was 75 million, and then you receive, we receive, we provided data, and now with data that is true or more relevant to the time period that we're in now, then we went from 75 to 60. So within six months, that is a substantial change solely based on data, is...
Well, I would say, it's really the data that drove the assumption. It's the assumption that changed, really, that, and the assumption that was based upon current data and past data, yes.
Sure.
And that was probably the most powerful assumption you're going to have in this whole process.
Right.
So what we changed?
I guess where I'm going is, simple guy, had a real big number, now it's less.
Yep.
Right? And it was, here's data, and we got a different number. So in six months from now, or one year from now, right, there will be new data provided.
Yep.
Something like that, where we will come back and see a new number reflective of data.
Yes.
That's true, which could reflect more or less, but we'll probably not see such a drop.
Correct.
Is that a fair assumption, right?
Yeah, that retiree healthcare trend from starting at 8.7, going down to a flat four, that's not going to happen again.
Right.
Now, I'm hoping it doesn't go up from four, but let's say, those assumptions don't change. Mortality assumption doesn't impact. You, you bit the bullet on that. That has minor impact year to year. The interest rate will have the biggest swing. So I come back in six months and say, your 93018 liability for your CAFR, well, we started with 60 million dollars, and now it's going to be 55 million.
Right.
And so like, what changed? Maybe it's strictly the discount rate, if it went up to over 4%. I don't think it's going to go down.
So this is, at this point, it's, we're talking instead of plus or minus 15, now we're plus or minus five-ish.
Right.
Somewhere off.
And in two years, the, the claims costs, you know, we're expecting a high inflation rate. Now, if you come back and it was 12% per year for the pre-65, and not the 8.5% or 8.75, you're going to have more of a loss. And we can see it's like a $2 million loss here. You could have another couple of million dollar loss. So that, and what we're seeing is, we typically get losses in that, because your experience, most experiences are even worse than what we assume sometimes, in that you aren't charging the retiree as much as you should, because they pay the active rate. And maybe you say, well, our claims are going up like that, but we don't want the actives to pay anything more. That has a big impact.
So...
That, that could have a bigger impact than the discount rate at this point. If they say, well, our claims costs went up 10% over the year, but we're only going to pass on 2% of that to our actives, and that the retirees pay the active rate, that flows right into these calculations. Because that's the implicit liability, that you're only charging retiree X dollars, but they're getting Y dollars of value. So if you don't keep that up, we assume that the contributions that they make are the same as the claims that go up at the same rate. So if they're not going up at the same rate, if they're not, if they're slower, you have a loss built in. We're talking the millions, but we're not talking 18 million or 10 million. It's fine tuning, but that's what causes losses, that you'll see a bigger number too.
And the, and one of, I believe I'm following, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to make sure is that, from, from numbers that we're seeing?
Right.
That if there is such a huge swing, that if that's a one-time shot, that's a one-time shot, but it's a bit more firm, all right? And then the last part, you just mentioned from Florida booking its liability in the billions, right, something like that. What would you consider the impact to Florida being for booking that amount? I mean, are they facing a credit crisis as well, or how's...
Well, I don't, I don't know how much, a few billion dollars on there overall.
Okay.
It's not, it's relatively probably be significant to you and me when I said, it's a big number, and they saw it coming. We told my head the time how much. But it's very limited. They do not provide any post-65 coverage. They do not provide any incentives or subsidies to employees. They just provide access. So providing access costs billions of dollars. They're not, it's just implicit liability. They don't give $500 with a cap or anything, they give zero. So that's how big the numbers could be, but you got hundreds of thousands of retirees and hundreds of thousands of actives, and they split it out, and they sort of like it's...
Do they have to book the number the same?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, now there, you'll see that in their 18 CAFR.
So we're going to have to move it along a little bit.
17 CAFR.
You have other questions coming? You, I took his office accidentally, that's why he went before you.
Oh, that's fine. I should be up for a second.
Go ahead.
That kind of touched on mine. I just wanted to clarify, you said we are not required to fund this? Is it because that state rule regarding that we are only, have to provide access, so it can change at any time?
Right. You're not required to fund it. You are required by state law to give them access.
Okay. And then, have you compared our numbers with any other cities and states?
Yes, I have.
How would you say...
I provided a draft of about 20 or so.
Okay.
To finance, three, four months ago. You're, you're at the top of the heap, pretty much.
Okay.
Primarily, majority only give access. That's right. So if they only give access...
Their liability is...
Their liability's small. Their expense is 1% to 2% of payroll at most, not 20%. Because they don't, see, the key there is, if you only give access, then you find only 15 to 20% of the people even take it. And that's what we assume, because if they have to pay the full freight, no subsidy, they find another way to get medical coverage. So very few people actually take that, maybe 20 to 25% if it's for fire and police and such, but a very small percentage of the people who do retire actually use that. So that's why it's a small number, because they have to pay the entire thing, and they find probably their sources, medical or whatever, to go to. Or they retire early, they go to another job to get medical.
Right.
We assume about 80% of your people take it, because they get a subsidy.
Yeah.
That's the key difference, yeah.
Hey, one more? Whoever knows.
So if we were to put some funds aside to fund that trust fund, any amount would be helpful in getting that number down, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And one of the keys on that expense that you've, it's the return on assets.
Correct.
So we assume 6.5 or 7% on assets as a part of your expense. So if you had twice as much assets, you get 7% on the bigger number, and that reduces your expense immediately, whether you make the 7% or not. It's just like the pension.
Okay.
We assume it, and if you don't make it, we amortize the difference over five years.
Okay.
One more.
So changing, and I heard you say this earlier, I think, changing the Gatsby, Gatsby changes the math.
Yep.
Okay? And changing the math can change the liability?
Yes.
And then...
It changes, when I say the liability, it's the liability you have to record.
Right.
As a city liability, not the present value benefits necessarily, but you've been accruing a liability in your books, like, if we tell you your expense is X and you're paying Y, the difference accumulates over time, and that's where the $10 million came in. It's just money that you were expensing, but you weren't funding.
I get real confused when I go from real numbers to assumed numbers. And that, and then we go to an actuary, and with that actuary, we assume something, and sometimes it takes it down from 75 million to 60 million. And then it just seems to me that, and I heard you even say, that's what happens when you have to go to Gatsby 75. It, you know, it just seems sometimes, you know, in athletics, we say a lot of times, you know, we can make numbers seem anything we want them to say. And that being said, I just give, I'm just a whole lot better when they say, this is what it is today, this is what it'll be tomorrow, and if we spend this much, this is what it'll be the next year. And I'm hearing a lot of assumptions, that it depends on this, that it depends on that. Just to make it clear, the Gatsby can change the math.
They can, and they did, yeah. They could have get, yeah. Nobody wanted them to change it, but they wanted to change it just like they did the pensions five years ago.
Right. And I guess what I'm getting at in the last year, and clearly, you're the expert, I'm not, it's, what I hear over and over is, now we show this liability that we didn't show before, and wouldn't show now if we didn't change Gatsby.
That is true. Yep. Yep. If you weren't subject to this, and that's, a lot of people commented that they didn't think it should be on the books for a lot of reasons, but the Gatsby did not listen to them, and you have to book that liability. Regarding the assumption change, we'll come to you with recommended assumption changes as we do evaluations, based upon what we see the changes. We came to you and said, we believe we should change the post-age 65 assumption for healthcare trend, to break it apart from the pre-65, for a lot of reasons. We're seeing that it's not going up, we have a history of very low rates, we should not use the same trend rate. We can, we, you know, we presented it, and it was agreed upon, that we would use the lower rate. Otherwise, we'd be back up at the 75, probably 77. And that, but that's a big assumption. That won't hap, you know, that doesn't happen again. But the key is, we felt, we really had to analyze that. Now, if you're going to put a number in your books, we don't want to come back to you in six months and, you know what? We think we overestimated the liability. You put 80 million dollars on your books, and we think it's worth 65. That wouldn't be good, so...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your presentation. We need a motion, I assume, to acknowledge presentation.
Yes, sir. Before you vote, would you have one card on this?
Oh, yes.
I'm Stan Johnston.
And your vote will be to acknowledge the presentation, sir.
Have three minutes, sir?
Yes, sir. My name is Stan Johnston, 860 points out of the tires for Florida. And I'm sorry, but I know I have my time. On this agenda, there's petitions and requests for public, and I hope that you will have that at this meeting, so I'll have a petition request at this meeting and one for next meeting. So I'm just asking that question.
Yes, sir.
Will happen. Okay. Thank you. All right. And this OPEB thing is that it's a very, I have many concerns about it, because this is an issue that we talked about, the issue of, used the word, first time I know in the city, it was the word bankruptcy was used. And I tried to contact Mr. Bartsch, and he's still talking, but he's not, I guess, I wish he would listen, because I've tried to contact him, I've sent him emails, but he's still talking while I'm trying to communicate with him, Mr. Bartsch, is that I've sent you emails and so forth. Pardon?
The comments should be directed to the council.
Well, I would, I would like, I'm hoping that he would listen. Okay. You're correct on that. So, so the, I didn't, didn't hear today about the falling off of a cliff and the bankruptcy issue that is spoken about at many council meetings, and also we had one council meeting that did not have an agenda item, that spoke twenty-seven minutes on this particular item, twenty-seven minutes, and there was almost nothing in it, in the, there was very little bit of, there was more in that particular meeting.
Sir, does this have to do with this item?
It's OPEB. That's exactly what I'm talking about, the twenty-seven.
You're talking about an individual that wasn't listening or something?
That's him.
No, I'm not talking that.
Pardon?
Please continue.
Okay. All right. Yes, we're talking about OPEB. And so we, there's been a discussion about the falling off a cliff, and there were some meetings in which Mr. Bartsch wasn't not here, and it seems that from his discussion today is that we are not in a position of falling off of a cliff, where we have to make a decision to reduce the retirement benefits. And that was a very serious issue. So it appears that the decision was made by council was correctly, that we, at this time, we are not in a crisis that we have to, to reduce the benefits. And what I've sent out to you is, it's, the crisis was, which I believe is created by an article by the Leroy Collins Institute titled "The Financial Challenges" and so forth. And that's what I've sent to you, is I've sent a letter, proposed letter, to the Leroy Collins Institute. So for them to, what I believe is to justify what they're saying is about, that we have a seventy-five million dollars unfunded liability, which I believe is more imaginary than real. So I'm asking you to look into that, because certainly, two seconds, once more time, please?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now we need the motion to acknowledge the presentation. You can just.
Do you want me to do it? Motion to acknowledge the presentation receipt of the OPEB actuarial evaluation.
Wait a second.
Second.
The motion, the second, will all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Pass this unanimously. Next item.
Yes, sir. Agenda item four E. Zach Colifer from James Moore will present an independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. Based on the audit of the city's FY seventeen comprehensive annual financial statement, CAFR performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And what we are asking council to acknowledge receipt of this report, sir.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Zach Chalifor, partner of James Moore and Company. I'm also joined tonight by Doug Gilligan, a manager with our firm, who worked on the audit. First and foremost, I would like to thank the council for the time they're here this evening, as well as to work with the city. This was our first year performing the city's external audit. A big thank you as well to Bridget and her team for all their hard work. You know, we witnessed firsthand some of the blood, sweat, and tears. Well, no blood, I'm aware of, but the sweat and tears and long nights and weekends that went into that finished product. So a big thank you to all of them for all their hard work and help through this process. First year audit, always a little difficult, just a transition, but it went exceptionally smooth, as we kind of both sides try and learn, you know, what we're looking for, how they do things, everything else. So a very smooth process, just a big thank you to everyone involved. Next slide, please. Oh, wait, never mind, I have it. Or do I?
He's coming up to help you, sir.
It says on. I wasn't pressing it hard enough. All right. So we are here to discuss the audit for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. We'll start by just pointing out that the city did receive the certificate of excellence, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the two thousand sixteen CAFR. We have every reason to believe that the two thousand seventeen CAFR will receive that award as well once submitted to the GFOA, which I believe will be thirty-two years that the city has submitted for and received this award. Our reports, the CAFR, the bound document that you all see, about two hundred pages, this is fully produced by staff with five reports that get provided by us and inserted into the final document. So the five reports, the first is our audit report on the financial statements themselves, where we did issue an unmodified report, that the city's financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. This is essentially a clean report, or what you'd want to see here, is the best report that we can issue on your financial statements. Our second report is on internal control and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. If we have any internal control deficiencies or compliance matters that come to our attention, those would be reported in this report. We just had two findings, very related. There were a couple of expense items that due to just timing differences, the cutoff, we had audit adjustments to correct the reflection of those expenses in the proper accounting period. As a result of that, there was a lot of police overtime, so that department did show up over budget when looking at your final budget, just due to that expense not being factored into that final amendment. Really, the key here, though, for all of those items, there were no issues with anything not being properly approved or anything of that nature from the operational standpoint. It was purely the year-end adjustments that we had and the impact from those. Those were the only two items in that report. Our third report was a single audit report. We performed a federal single audit where we had to go do really a mini compliance audit over your major federal grant programs. There were two programs that we tested, and we had no findings to report with regard to those compliance audits. Our fourth report is a separate management letter required by the auditor general that addresses a series of items that they specify. There were two other recommendations, not really deficiencies, but just considerations as you go forward that were reported here. There were no other issues or, or modifications to that standard letter in that fourth report. And then our fifth report was an examination report on the city's compliance with specified statutes from the state over investments and investment policies. And in this report, we did say that the city was in compliance with those specified statutes. Quick look at some of the numbers. In your general fund, looking at your fund balance, really your reserves, your equity, retained earnings, and more kind of private sector terminology, but for you all, it's your fund balance. In the general fund, there's five buckets. Your non-spendable is money where the cash is already out the door and can't be used for something else this year, such as inventory, you've already spent to buy up that inventory. Restricted fund balance is anything that is restricted by an external source that you must use it for this specific purpose. And then looking at the other three buckets, the committed is something that's really earmarked by resolution. This is primarily your stabilization reserve. Assigned is just kind of your more informal earmarking, and then unassigned is really what's left over. And I share this with you as we run up to the next slide, to kind of look at what your five point seven million dollars in fund balance at the end of the year looks like as relates to your annual budget. Before we go, I will point out that there was a little bit of decrease there. You all did increase the millage slightly to help cover that as you go forward, because the last two years, there have been some use of those reserves for recurring items that, you know, something had to kind of give on one side or the other. So from what we've seen so far, fiscal year eighteen looks like you should be pretty flat in terms of looking at those reserves versus your operating budget. So to put it in perspective a little bit, the GFOA recommends a minimum of two months of operating reserves measured by your assigned plus your unassigned fund balance relative to your recurring expenditures. We also, for purposes of this calculation, factor in your committed fund balance, because that includes your by-resolution identified stabilization reserve fund. So when we look at those two numbers, you're about fifteen and a half percent, so pretty much right at that minimum benchmark. There was also a deferral of some FEMA monies that with that, you'd pretty much be right there, but just through the timing of the FEMA receivables not coming in within sixty days after year end, that revenue has not yet been recognized in the general fund. But really, the bottom line, you know, you're pretty much right in line with that minimum target. To look at some of your business-type funds, a three-year trend of your unrestricted net position in those funds, really, and your unrestricted net position is very much like your working capital. We're not looking at your capital assets or any debt in those funds, but really more of your, your current assets, the pension and OPEB liabilities also get factored in to this calculation. You can see there's a pretty substantial decrease from sixteen to seventeen. That really, for the most part, equals what the additional OPEB liability was that got reported in these funds. About thirty-two million last year, fifteen million this year, and it was about seventeen million of that additional impact that you just heard from when you went from about ten million dollars to sixty million in terms of that OPEB liability with GASP seventy-five. What we look at otherwise is, you know, are the funds generating cash flows to help cover any debt requirements, capital requirements? And all of those funds really had that positive cash flow. And from that standpoint, what it then becomes from a budgetary standpoint is that you are looking at those numbers as relates to any future capital planning, for instance, in your water and sewer fund. But many of those, even though we have some negative balances, most of those are due to OPEB, and looking at a trend basis without the OPEB are generally trending in the right direction. So pension and OPEB, you've heard a lot about OPEB already, so I won't talk about that too much more. But just here, we do have a little breakdown to kind of see what those changes were. So your OPEB numbers under the old GASP forty-five standards, you're about eight million in two thousand fifteen, up to ten million in sixteen. And then in these current financial statements, basically what happened was to implement the new standard, the beginning net position was restated for the new methodology. So you went from that ten million dollars under the old to sixty-five as a starting point, that then changed to sixty over the course of recognizing everything in fiscal year two thousand seventeen, to end up at that sixty point three million dollar OPEB liability. To touch on your pension liabilities as well, all of those, there is a positive trend in those unfunded liabilities coming down a bit, the funded percentages going up. These are, you know, no one where it's a very significant estimate, and these are just the GASP valuation numbers versus looking at it from a funding standpoint, where this, these numbers are all at the point in time of September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. There's no smoothing that goes into the unfunded number for GASP purposes. That's done in a different manner through the financial statements. But so these numbers do reflect at the point in time based on all the assumptions used, but I just wanted to kind of touch on those as well, to kind of put everything out there in terms of all of these, which, as you kind of talked about, they are all very significant estimates that, as you have seen, can, you know, change substantially due to any assumption changes, things like that. You know, if your discount rate goes up or down by one percent, things of that nature. With that, those are really the highlights I wanted to touch on. If there's any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them, and thanks again for your time.
Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you, sir. We do need a motion on this?
So we have one card on this item?
Please call the card.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points, Southern Avenue. And I'm here to comment on what's going on. I have called, I have tried to meet with Bridget on these issues, and she just hasn't had the time for, beginning in about January the twelfth. So my input had, didn't go, hasn't been put in here. So on this particular issue, I could, I could go on forever, but not forever, but for too long, and I only have three minutes. But I think it would be important for me to mention that, is that, is that the budget, there was nothing spent on cleaning the ditches, and it's not, wasn't budgeted, and it should have been done.
Point of order, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's related, it kind of.
Please stop the clock.
Comments are related to.
Please stop the clock.
And not related.
Please stop the clock.
I get to say that, you don't. I'm in control of this meeting. Stop the clock, please.
Comments are unrelated to the report, it's related to the budget, which is a different deal. If it's related to the integrity of the report, that might have something to do with it, but how we spend, what we spend. How we spend or what we spend is not being addressed.
Mr. Matt, Mr. Behringer was out of order. He was supposed to get permission from the chair to speak.
I gave him permission.
I didn't see it.
I'm sorry, you didn't.
You did. All right. Thank you.
I did.
Okay. So I don't, this is, this is very much in a, is it?
Are you going to continue?
Yes, yes. Okay. And you can give me some more time. Okay. So I, one thing I can mention is my, I express a concern for the transfer of enterprise funds to the general fund. And back in the nineteen nineties, what happened was is that an employee named Don Matson went, was director of water resources, he made complaints to the city manager that the city manager had taken one million dollars of the fund that he had had in enterprise funds and illegally transferred it to the general budget fund.
Point of order, sir.
Yes, sir.
The comments are irrelevant.
Stop the clock, please.
The comments are relevant to what was presented. The comments are relevant to what was presented. If it was something that happened that was a criminal negligent act, I would consider that slanderous, if there's no evidence to support that, something that should be taken up with the police. At this point, we're wasting time, and it's disrupting city business.
He's correct. Want to continue?
This is very much has to do with the budget and transfer of funds.
Somebody died, and somebody stole something that has nothing to do with what's happening.
I believe it does. It has very much.
You may, I don't.
You don't have it, but I believe it has very much to do with the budget.
Do you want to continue, or should I cut the light off? Or should I cut your time off?
I didn't hear what you said.
Do you want to continue properly?
Well, this is a matter, this is very much in the subject. This is budgeting.
You're using your time, sir.
Okay. All right. So here's, here's what happened, is that, it was announced in public and with some emotions is that, is that Mr. Matson said, hey, you know, this is illegal. What's happening is we've got enterprise fund going, money going to budget.